The CMCSS School Board Study Session for August 8, 2024 is now in session. First item on the agenda is Surplus Property Technology. Dr. Luna?
Good evening. Each year of the school year, the property items that are considered to have exhausted their useful life are identified as surplus and temporarily stored in the warehouse. The list you have before you are items that are incompatible with current technology or are obsolete. The recommendation, according to TCA 496-2007, is recommending that we surplus and sell these items at public auction.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, the second item on the agenda is Recommendation and Approval of Hearing Officer, Dr. Luna.
I'd like to welcome our Chief Human Resource Officer Melissa Isit to discuss this item tonight. Pause. Hello. Related to tenure and non-tenured employees require the use of an impartial hearing officer in a few limited employment situations. On the rare instances this is needed, the district's practice has been to retain an impartial hearing officer from the TSBA list of hearing officers, which has been approved by the board. The TSBA list consists, contains licensed attorneys, mediators, and retired judges. The law requires Director of Schools to select an impartial hearing officer, and by the board approving this TSBA list, the director has several impartial hearing officers whom she can select when needed. The recommendation is to continue this practice and request the board to approve the Director of Schools as necessary to select a hearing officer from the TSBA list of hearing officers.
Thank you very much. Ms...
Maybe I missed it, but I got the... This being on the agenda, but I did not see the list of those recommended hearing officers that you're asking us to vote on.
So the list changes depending on the timing, so once there is a situation, we would pull the list at that time. So that TSBA list just changes periodically depending on who's available.
Still using the TSBA?
Correct, correct. That's the recommendation is to continue to use that list.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none. Thank you so much. The next item, Retiree Insurance 2024 Update. Dr. Luna?
I'd like to welcome again Melissa Isit to talk about the retiree insurance plan. You should have received the retiree insurance benefit recommendation in the board packet. We review our retiree participation every year, and it continues to be a very valuable benefit. At this time, we are recommending an extension of this benefit through fall 2028. As of September 1st, we will have 173 CMCSS retirees participating, with an annual board cost projected at $851,968.78.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the FY 2025 Budget Amendment. Dr. Luna?
I'd like to welcome Chief Financial Officer Jeff Taylor to talk about the potential budget amendments.
Good evening to everyone. We've got four budget amendments we want to make for this evening. First, you'll find on page 12 of your board packet. The first one is under 72310 Board of Education Increase to Insurance and Liability Claims of $280,000, just to cover forecasted liability claims for the year. The next one will be on page 14. That will be for 72610 Operations of Plant. That's an amendment to increase the insurance premiums in the amount of $465,440 for property insurance, just to increase that based on the premium invoices we've received. The next one is 72620 Maintenance of Plant on that same page. That is for the vehicle insurance for the general purpose fund. That increase is for $29,568. And then lastly, on page 19, an increase of $52,495 for vehicle insurance premiums as well.
Would the increase in the vehicle premiums was because we got more vehicles or did they just raise the price?
Just increased the price. When we do the budget for the school system, it's done in January and February, and those estimates come in, and they're just estimates, and then once the invoices come in in May and June, we have to make adjustments on those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Number five. Goal number seven, meet the unique needs of certified and classified employees with personal learning experience. Policy reference E1, E2 Professional Development Update. Dr. Luna?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Director of Professional Learning Tina Smith to discuss this goal tonight.
Good evening, board members. All right, tonight I will be going over goal number seven, under the category of maximizing employee capacity. So our goal for the 2425 school year is to meet the unique needs of both our certified and classified employees with personalized learning experiences. So to give you an idea of how we're going to reach this goal for this year, I want to start off by giving you a look at what we have done, some of our work from the 2324 school year, and then how we're going to build upon that work for 2425 to meet this year's goal. The icon that you'll see on the left-hand side of your screen is for what we call PLAN. It is our Professional Learning Activities Network. This is where employees go to register for professional learning opportunities. So it's where we house our catalog of offerings. They register, and we also keep track of the learning that they do throughout the year. Now, I've shared with you before, not all of the learning that employees do throughout the district is captured within this system, but the vast majority of it is. So the data points that I'm sharing with you this evening come from this system and the data that is collected within it. So if you will draw your attention to the chart on the right-hand side of the screen, you will see the total hours accumulated for the 2324 school year. Next to that, you have the prior year for reference. It is broken up into different categories. We have these for reporting purposes. So for instance, the state of Tennessee requires that educators earn a certain amount of in-service credit each year. So that middle category for in-service is for any of the learning activities that align with those state guidelines and requirements. Tassel hours are for our administrators. They need tassel hours to advance their licenses and renew their licenses, so they have a requirement for a certain amount of tassel credit each year. Now, this isn't the full amount of tassel credits that our administrators receive. This is just the amount of tassel credits that they earned within CMCSS. So these are classes that we sent to the state for approval for that credit. And then everything else will fall into that other category of simply training hours. And so you can see here, we had a total of over 243,000 hours that employees earned last year in the 2324 school year. It is a significant increase from the prior year. Learning a lot is great, but we also need to make sure that we're learning the right things as well to be able to meet this goal. So I'm going to break that down just a little bit more. So on this slide, we're going to look first at our in-district offerings. So to earn that large number of professional learning hours from last year, we offered over 1,100 courses for employees to choose from. And even that number can be a little misleading. A course is the big umbrella topic, and a course can have many different sections and meeting dates underneath it. So for example, our new hires have one course of the work that they do with their mentor throughout their first year in the district, but they meet all throughout the year, and every meeting has a different topic, different learning, and it's tailored to meet those new teacher needs. So even when you see 1,000 courses, that can mean a very significant amount of learning. So with over 1,000 courses, that also means that we're able to tailor the learning to very specific needs across the districts. So we can have courses specific to grade levels, content areas, and needs identified within each of those. Now, the vast majority of our learning happens in person. So 961 of those courses were in-person synchronous courses. We do still have the need for asynchronous learning, though. So 176 of our courses were actually online courses. There are times when a self-paced course is very appropriate to meet a learner's needs, so that they can do it online by themselves. They can get a piece of learning and go apply that piece of learning before they take the next piece, and then they always have it to reference back to as well. So some of our learning is asynchronous as well. Now, even though we offer the vast majority of learning within the district, there are some cases where we need to look outside of the district for learning as well. So we do have out-of-district learning opportunities. There were 341 custom professional learning activities that were submitted that were unique to different learning needs. So for example, there occupational therapists, that's a position that often has to go outside of the district to find learning unique to their needs that will help them renew their licenses. Another example, the state of Tennessee puts on the Tennessee Arts Academy every year. That's a great academy that happens in Nashville that we try to send a small handful of related arts teachers to, so that they can get that learning and bring it back to the other teachers in their area. So even though we do offer over 75% of our learning in district, you can see that represented by the green, and that was the figures that I showed you in the very first chart, we do have a process in place for the learning that we do need to seek outside of the district as well and have a way to capture that learning for employees. Now, in addition to having great learning opportunities aligned to needs, we have to make sure that it is hitting the mark as well. And so one of the ways that we look to see if the learning is meeting the needs of employees is through a survey with each course. You can see two questions pulled out here of the participants who responded. 98% of them agreed that the professional learning activity that they take aligned with their intended learning goals. So that means once they were able to identify learning that they needed, and they went and took the course that they agreed that that learning was what they thought they were going to learn about, and it did align with their goal, and that was a 1% increase from where we were last year. In addition, 98% also agreed that they will be able to go back and put that learning into practice, and that's our ultimate goal of professional learning. We want educators to be able to put that learning into practice to change learning for students in the classrooms. So that, again, that was a 1% increase from last year as well. We have already started learning for the 2425 school year. We're, you know, just getting ready to welcome our students for the half-day tomorrow, but that learning for, preparing for 2425 started very early. The first full week in June, we had the Engage 24 Learning Conference. The conference happens a week in June and a week in July. The July figures aren't quite ready to share with you yet, but I do have the June figures here for you to see. So we had over 1,500 unique learners join us at Kirkwood High School to kick off their learning for the 2425 school year. You can see the breakdown there of the different members that attended that learning, and together they earned over 10,000 hours of professional learning to prepare for this upcoming school year. So when we put both weeks of Engage together, there were over 609 courses offered, so there were ample opportunities for employees to find the learning that they needed to meet their specific learning needs. All right, so focusing on meeting our goal for the 2425 school year, we're going to continue to utilize the expertise of employees from across the district to put together this great learning and facilitate it. But we have two primary areas of focus. The first is preparing our new new teacher, making sure that we have the right supports in place to meet their needs. And the second is on enhancing leadership capacity of our new leaders and those who are up and coming as well. So let's start off by looking at a little bit of information around our new teachers. When we look back to the 2324 school year, we hired 525 new certified teachers, new certified hires. So of those hires, 298 of them were what we would consider traditionally certified. The other 227 are what we would consider alternatively certified. So whether that is a teacher resident who is finishing their program and getting ready to step into their very own classroom for the first time, or whether that is someone who is coming to us with a college degree, but they're starting to teach while they're working to get their teacher certification, we know that the learning needs of someone coming in on a waiver or a permit or a job embedded license is going to look different than someone coming in from a traditional path. And so last year, one of the things that we did was to separate our induction supports into two different pathways to meet the needs of those two different learner groups. So our induction team put together all new learning materials. They trained the mentors in those materials and utilized them throughout the year last year very successfully. So we're continuing to build on the success of those pathways. But one thing that we're adding new this year in addition to that is district mentor teachers. So these are five positions that were reallocated within the district, and they're going to be working with some high-need teachers in priority areas to provide focused job embedded support. So they're going to be there to co-teach alongside these teachers, to model lessons for them, and just really get them comfortable with their classrooms and feel confident in what they're doing. They're going to be a great support as well for our late hires, because historically, we know that teachers that start after the beginning of the school year often have a hard time finding that confidence and feeling very successful in their first year. So this layer of support will really add an extra hand to get those teachers ready and feeling confident in teaching within their first year in the district. Now, I do want to highlight some of our classified learning as well, because this is a huge support in that new teacher path as well. Last year, 32% of our new certified hires came from a classified position in the district already. So the more that we are able to build up that classified learning and give them the things that they need to perform successfully in their current roles, then we can also build them up to advance their careers into other roles within the district. So two areas I would like to highlight for our classified learning will be around our orientation opportunity. So prior to the 2324 school year, we offered orientations for our educational assistants, but it was only for those who were hired before the school year began. So last year, we were able to expand that so that it could happen continuously throughout the school year, no matter when an employee was hired on. We also added a shadow opportunity, so they were able to shadow another educational assistant in their building before they were ever interacting with students. So that was a phenomenal addition last year that we were able to continue again this year with those 240 educational assistants throughout the year. Another piece that I would love to highlight for you, we started a mentorship pilot program at one of our middle schools last year. So they were each assigned a mentor that would guide their learning throughout the year, and they had 16 additional learning sessions spread throughout the year to really build their understanding of their roles at a deeper level and really help them engage with students better in their roles. So we're looking to expand that as well this year to a few additional middle schools for that pilot as well. So over the last three years, our focus and opportunities for classified learning has really had an opportunity to grow and shift. We started out just being able to provide some learning for our classified members on staff development days. Since then, over the past three years, we've expanded to learning opportunities in the summer during Engage. Last year, we were able to embed some additional opportunities during the workday. For our bus drivers, we were able to offer a few professional learning activities in between their routes, when, after they finished their morning route and before they started their afternoon route. They could participate in some professional learning activities during that timeframe. And we were also able to add a behavior series after school for some other employee groups to be able to come and take advantage of that learning if that met a particular need that they had. Over the past three years, we've also had a focus on content-specific learning for those employees so that the educational assistants could really learn to support the students in the classrooms at a higher level. And then the final thing that I would like to share with you this evening is our second area of focus, working to build our leadership capacity. So we have a lot of leadership academies in the district, and one of the ones that I would like to highlight for you this evening, some adjustments that we're making this year to the Aspiring Administrator Academy, is we're going to have a stronger focus on the application of their learning all throughout that year-long academy. This year, for the first time, they are being assigned a mentor that is a current assistant principal, who they'll get to work with throughout the year and build their expertise and experience there as well. And we're also being really strategic about building in interactions with our senior leadership members as well, so that they will have that experience to connect and relate to. So we're working on all of our academies to help our current and future leaders build their expertise, help them build their leadership skills where they are right now, and help them have the leadership skills they need to advance into their future roles, all focused on meeting the needs of our students. So that is all of the information I had prepared to share with you this evening. Does anybody have any questions you would like me to clarify?
I think those certified hires from within, how many of those came out of the Grow Your Own program?
Oh, I don't have that number off the top of my head. I want to say for this upcoming school year, we're going to be graduating 43, 48. I'll have to know what last year's were. I'll have to get that for you.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Nelson?
Hi, it's good evening, Ms. Smith. Thank you for that presentation. I have a question, just because in the past, it seems to have rubbed some teachers wrong, but as far as the, your district mentors, which I think is a great idea, how do you keep that in check to make sure that those mentors aren't becoming another administrator over the people that they're meant, supposed to be mentoring?
Oh, absolutely. This is not designed to be an evaluative role in any way. These are other classroom teachers who have a background in coaching and mentorship, and they're coming in to stand right alongside these teachers and hold their hands and help them learn the best practices in the classroom. So it should not feel like that at all.
Thank you. Ms. Berry?
I too. Thank you for that presentation. How many professional development hours do certified teachers have to have annually?
So the state of Tennessee requires them to have 30 hours of year, a year. We build 12 of those into the district calendar, so then teachers have to get 18 hours outside of the contract workday.
And are they still required to have some classes that help with suicide prevention?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the other one is, how many hours are required by our certified staff?
So the numbers that I just gave you were for our certified staff. I may have misunderstood. So classified, if that is the question as well, they're not required any certain specific number of hours.
Okay. And then I think you talked about the mentors, I know their classroom, I know that there are mentors in the schools. And are those mentors paid extra salary to help the teachers that need help? Or is it a volunteer situation?
So the district mentors that I was talking about, that is their position. We do additionally have what we call a site-based induction specialist. Those are full-time classroom teachers who are working to support the new teachers in the building as well, but they are paid an additional stipend to do that mentorship.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Well presented.
Thank you.
This time, county commissioners, do you have any comments?
I just had a quick comment, and I may be wrong on my figures, but it looks like 525 new hires for 2324 represents about 20% of our teachers, because we had, what, 2,500 teachers in the last calendar year, correct?
No, I think we had slightly more than that, but we can get those exact numbers, and I'm not sure where we're at right now. I hate to put HR on the spot, but do you know about how many new teachers we have coming in for this year as of today? Not yesterday, today. Yes. 323 have on-boarded for this coming school year.
Me, sometimes I equate things more on the business side. If I had a business where I had 20% that I had to hire every year, I'd be fairly alarmed by that. But if it's 300, that obviously cuts that in half, so.
Yeah, so that was one of the, you know, reasons I asked that question. We are seeing a much higher retention rate this year, and you do have to equate for retirements. We actually have, you know, an aging population of teachers. When you look, we have more teachers, which we're excited about, but that are hitting retirement age, and we're trying to keep them as long as possible than people entering newly into the profession. And then the other piece of it that we do have to battle, like I think everyone else is, we are very welcoming to military spouses, and sometimes we also know that we're only going to get them for a few years, but we'd rather get them for a few years. But yes, we are absolutely looking at that closely, but I, we will get the exact numbers and actually share that with you. It's not, I don't believe, it is quite to that number, but we'll get it for you.
Unfortunately, we can't keep our great teachers teaching until age 100. We wish we could, but we can't.
We're trying, we're trying.
Thanks.
That's, that's a great point. So that is another piece of it. So the last three years at each additional school, as we add more teachers, but, but I would, because I'm all about the data too, but we can get that breakdown and also look at what that looks like for attracting externals, especially as we're building new schools. Yeah.
Well, we thank you all for coming out, and we can, no. We would just like to recognize Dr. Huff. This is our last board meeting today. As a board member, I'd like to thank her for all the work that she has done here for Montgomery County. I know Dr. Luna's going to give you your kudos, but the bottom line, from my position, you have always been a professional. You always stepped up when the time was needed, and you did an excellent job in every position that you've served. So I just hope if you decide to come back into the profession, think about CMCSS. Do we have any other comments from the school board? Ms. Huff, Ms. Pace?
I'd just like to be the first to welcome Chris Lanier and Casey Bryant of the Clarksville Montgomery County School Board in a couple of weeks. I was ready to share my chair with you tonight, Casey, but they said two more meetings, one more meeting after this. And Dr. Vetter, are you going to address all the awesome training that's been going on recently with the new teachers? I can't believe everything that's being offered for the brand-new teachers that are coming in, other than what she'd said. When I came into the system, the preparation was you were given a box of chalk and two erasers, and that's, that was our training, and I just can't believe what, what they're doing for the teachers.
Absolutely, and maybe we might be able to include a short video or something in the next board meeting, but the onboarding nowadays, that's what I said, it's completely different, which i- in a good way. We have the high school bands welcoming them as they're entering the building. We've got, we've got photo booths going on, and it, the team has done a great job welcoming our teachers.
Mr. Nelson?
I'd just like to echo Mr. Garland's comments about Dr. Huff. She's been tremendous, and everything that she's done, she's done, it seems effortlessly in whatever she's done. And she's always been there to help out, and any emails I send out, I get a response right back from her, and she just has helped me with so many situations. And it's going to be hard to have someone like you back and replacing you, so we're going to be, we're going to miss you. Yes, and like Mr. Garland says, please keep us in mind if you decide to come back. All right, thank you.
Ms. Berry?
I too would like to thank Dr. Huff for all of the help that she's given me and lots of things that she's helped me with as far as helping the community, because it's about serving, and she has a servitude attitude, and I appreciate you, and always loving and kind, never rude and rambunctious. But a lot of things that she actually did helped me to be successful, including board chair. She just made sure that I had everything I needed to be successful. And I know that all of senior leadership helps us in every way that they can, but thank you, Angela, and I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, Dr. Luna. Send your hands.
Good evening, board members. This week is one of the most exciting weeks in K-12 education, the beginning of the school year. Today, I was able to visit several high schools for freshman orientation, and tomorrow kicks off the first half-day of school for the 2425 school year. As I traveled to schools this week, I was optimistic about the positive energy and excitement from faculty and staff members. We are almost 99% staffed for educators and 82% staffed on bus drivers. I will note that I believe two to three years ago, we were only 51% staffed at bus drivers, so... so kudos to the team, and part of the professional development you heard about tonight really has had a big impact. This is the highest that we have been to start the school year in the past three years. Tonight is a bittersweet meeting, as it marks the last board meeting for our Dr. Angela Huff, who has served our district for the past six years in the roles of Chief of Staff and Interim Director of Schools. I cannot commend Dr. Huff enough for her guidance, advice, loyalty, and friendship during the time that I have worked alongside her. Angela has always been a class act, and I've already shared with her that she will always have a home at CMCSS. Thank you, Dr. Huff, and please don't be a stranger. And I would like to give her just something real quickly.